Call meeting the order and ask for roll call.
Lunar.
Here.
Hilliard.
Here.
Leach.
Here.
Mendel.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
Forma Chief.
If you join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
There are no public hearings, no presentations or special reports. Consent agenda tonight is approval of the minutes, the regular meeting of July 18, 2022, and approval of the bills. You have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Leach?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Lunar?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Mendel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. I have nothing tonight except it was nice we had the big Hart of Illinois tennis tournament here in Morton this year. I think it was the 53rd or 52nd, but it was a nice turnout, so a nice event for the citizens. Village clerk.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Village administrator.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Chief of police.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Corporation counsel.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
And director of public works.
One item tonight, your honor. I am in front of you, item A, in ordinance making amendments to section eight, one dash ten, the Morton municipal code regarding trimming trees and shrubs overhanging in the public right of way.
We have a motion.
Second.
You like to add some comment?
Yeah, this was brought to me, you know, for discussion from the street department. Essentially, this puts a little more discretion, I mean, my name's in there, but with the street department, on things that are overhanging, you know, the right of way, the sidewalk. And really, it was more the time taken in the old ordinance, you know, the 14 days to send a letter while there's an obstruction, while there's a problem. A lot of times, we might have rented equipment. It's just, it's just not a very convenient thing. So, we still intend to follow the same rules there, but try to clean that up. Guys are taking a lot of training on trimming trees and doing things appropriately, so I feel confident that we can expedite things, still communicate, but do a better job of getting things done and not waiting for 14 days, sending a letter when there might be a visibility or a site concern with signs and stuff like that. So, be glad to answer any questions that.
Any questions?
I'm a little concerned that there's nothing that really states that you would contact the property owner and notify them of what you're intending to do.
Okay. And I'm fine if we want to make a change and add something or amend something. I think really this was just really trying to get the 14 days. It's a lot of time, you know, in between, and we're a lot of times on to other things.
Well, the one thing that I would say going along with trustee Newman is, is that it's not like it just grew. It's been growing for a while, and you can generally see the problem coming. The other thing to remember is, is that the reason why that is written, I think, that way was many years ago, we would have our street department actually go back and trim farther back in the right of way.
Sure.
Into the tree, and we don't want to do that. And so, you're giving, I think, if I remember right, and president Kaufman would know as well, is that the reason why they went farther into the tree or into the property was to do it our, you know, the proper ways that the tree would be trimmed, I guess, you know, correctly. And giving the 14-day notice allows them to try to do something before we do something, you know, type thing. So, I agree with trustee Newman. I do think we should give notice, maybe if you want to make it less than that. But again, it didn't just all of a sudden show up. It's been showing up over a period of years, and I don't think we shouldn't make, I don't think because of that that we should make it sound like it's an emergency that we have to do. I understand about signs, but even that, it didn't grow overnight, I don't think. So, I do think we have to give notice.
And I, just to clarify, I mean, we're not trying to go past the right of way here. We're doing things within the right of way. I'm just saying, I, we can do a better job. That's fine, we can do it that way, but I can promise you, we're going to be on to other things, and we keep doing what we've been doing. But I think we can do a better job if there's a little more discretion. But I understand, and I respect that.
Well, I'm not necessarily saying that it has to be, certainly not 14 days, and I don't even necessarily think. I think just contact them before you do it, so that if there is some concern on their part.
Sure.
They can at least voice that concern, and then maybe tell you, okay, we'll just take care of it ourselves. But I don't want, I guess I don't want to see the village just going out there and, you know, doing some trimming without the homeowner at least being notified.
Sure. And it's not going to take away, I mean, we understand, and as you know, Ken, I mean, when you're trimming trees, we understand. So, I mean, that's why I'm asking for a little confidence in that. We understand if we do something wrong, we're going to get, we don't want the phone calls when it comes to tree trimming. We're just trying to expedite. When we're renting equipment and lifts and stuff like that that we don't have, it's, it would be a little easier to take care of a few things. So, I mean, my goal is to not have phone calls come to you guys. So, you know, that's, that's my thinking here. But I understand.
Just a remark on what trustee Newman said, and I know that sometimes an individual may say, hey, I'll, I'll take care of it, once they notice, but sometimes their own time can be a considerable amount of time. I don't know that we, don't want to put some kind of a timeline on it that, okay, they're, they've, they've been notified, they're going to take care of it, but we're going to put a timeline on when that's going to be. And I wonder if we're not more better suited to actually have that verbiage in the ordinance as to not. With, and I'm not saying the 14 days, but, you know, a seven day, if I, some, something, I, I don't know. Sort of thoughts on that, or?
I, I, you're kind of looking at it from a little bit different perspective of getting the job done. You're making sure if, if, if the homeowner said, we'll take care of it, then we want to make sure they take care of it within a reasonable length of time. I'm just more, I mean, my concern is talk to them first.
And I totally agree with you and trustee Leach on that, the notification, but I'm, I don't know that we should have an open end and not.
We're not looking to kill trees. We're looking to keep it clean, you know, seven foot above the sidewalk, 16 foot. I mean, to me, this is more, we're looking for a little bit of trust to be able to keep the town the way I know that you guys want it kept. And the 14 days, I don't think we can do as good a job, is my opinion. I'm not saying we can't do that. It's not going to be as good a job out there, just with the time it takes and renting equipment and the.
Let, let me toss something out there just for maybe accomplish kind of what sounds like maybe we're trying to, everybody's trying to accomplish, is what if it's, what if it's not, you know, permission, hey, do you want to do this? Do we want to do this? It's just, okay, seven days ahead of time, we put a flyer on their thing that says, hey, we're going to be doing this. It's not a, a choice of you can do it yourself or not. Now, if, and within that seven days, they get out there and they trim themselves, fantastic, great. When we pull up with our equipment, don't have to stop there, we keep going to the next place. But then that keeps, I, I understand the idea of, you know, I'm probably guilty of myself, like, hey, you know, I'll, I'll take care of it, I'll do that. And then three months go by, and the equipment's taken back, you know, months ago, and you're, you're revisiting it the next year, and the next year, oh yeah, I'll, I'll get down that. We're, we're just saying, hey, we're, we're going to do it. And I agree with you, I think a notification is nice. Like, if somebody was trimming a tree on my property, or on the edge of my property, I at least want to know about it, but it's, we're going to do that.
Can we use the Code Red system to do that? It's worked very good to send out a mass to that area as a way to notify. We've got the technology now to do that. It would save a lot of time. Then we could do similar to AMR, and we're, I mean, we can definitely put those things in there.
No.
Before maybe our, hey, we're going to be trend trimming in this area, we're coming through, this is our standard. I mean, we, Julie's helped me already using that system.
And door hangers might work also.
So, really, the purpose of this is to make it safer for people, prevent damage from overgrown limbs, and to save money. And by notifying the people in seven days in advance, they just know that you're coming. I would, if it were me, I would welcome it. It doesn't cost me anything to have my tree trimmed. If I want to take it farther back, I can. I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
May I add something? I do speak with a lot of homeowners, because I do get a lot of these complaints from people. What my experience is, is the sidewalk issue is not such a problem. I mean, it is a problem, but it's not a big deal if it's seven feet or lower. But in the street, I get multiple, people say, well, I'm not going out to the street and getting up 16 feet and cutting that. I'm just not doing that. I can't do that. I'm going to have to hire somebody, so then it becomes a very long drawn-out process of trying to follow up, because they'll say, well, I can get a guy, but it's going to be in a month. It's going to be six weeks, seven weeks. So, then we're like, okay, but it's overhanging the road, I'm getting calls, the vehicles are having issues with this. So, now it puts us in a rock and hard place where they say they're going to do it, yes, but yet we kind of need it done a little faster than that for the safety.
Yeah, and we want to avoid that.
Yes.
My question was, what's the process? Do you trim trees back between June and August, or, or do you just go out as you get complaints? I mean, I would assume you have a methodical process that's efficient and.
A lot of times, a lot of times, we're renting equipment, so yeah, it's done at certain times. Yeah, there will maybe times where they fill in a day or two in certain areas, but.
Is it because they have time, because there's no?
It's usually on the schedule, and we know stuff needs done, so we're trying to find those areas. But then we also get a lot of calls from the school district, the buses. They get hit every time I drive through here, and we'll go hit those areas.
Your, your mass.
Code red.
Communication, I think, is wonderful, and I think that's sufficient.
I think the seven-day notice is a great idea.
Yeah.
Ahead of time.
Yeah.
We got seven days.
So, that would be easy for us to do, the way our operation is.
As long as they're enrolled.
And I can assure you, if we're coming to a big tree, we're not. We understand, my guys understand the issues. And I'm not saying we're not going to have a few. I mean, we deal with unhappy customers a lot of times, but we're not wanting to make a mess for ourselves. So, our guys have taken training, how to trim trees, all those things, all the street departments, so they're knowledgeable of what, we don't want to kill trees, I can tell you that. Otherwise, I'm getting a call from the guy in the middle chair there, which is probably the floor.
True. But you have to remember, the trees between the sidewalk and the curb are the city streets, and when they're cracked and bad, they got to come down.
Well, I commend your efforts for wanting to keep things trimmed up, because, you know, I have to go very far and then things aren't trimmed up.
And I respect the questions, I understand it. I totally understand it.
I think we came up with a good resolution.
Mr. Counselor?
Yes, sir.
Would we need to make a second motion amending that to include a notification made within seven days prior to the cutting to that?
Yes. Or you could make a motion to table it, and I could prepare a clean version of this ordinance and have it for you next day.
We need a preference to everybody hearing, right?
Yeah.
The latter.
Move to table it, then. Second.
Okay. We go vote on that first. All right, we'll vote on that, table and the motion. Call the roll.
Lunar.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have on that turn.
Zoning and code enforcement?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Thank you. Village trustees, trustee Leach?
Yes, your honor, have one item, ordinance 2304, I move approval.
Sorry.
As you read this, several months ago, we approved the purchase of software that would allow us to do this type of transaction to bill electronically, our utility bills. And so, at the same time, but we did not pass an ordinance reflecting that we would provide this type of discount. So, with this, we would provide a 50 cent discount on natural gas and 50 cent water utility, or a total discount of $1. How it's broken down by the system, I'm not sure, but it'll be able to show a dollar deduction. So, I ask your approval of this motion.
Questions?
I have some concerns with this. One, as I look at it, we have a ballpark 7,000 customers in town, and I, I see that the 50 cent and/or a dollar, as some will get a different, different amount, is a very minimal incentive device for the individual to get on board, to receive stuff electronically, as well as in addition, they also have to have the automatic payment come out to be able to qualify this. But in the end run, it can be significant for the village. In the event that, it would be 7,000 customers a dollar, you're talking $84,000 a year that would come out of our pockets to incentivize the individuals to do this. I know that there was talk in the past that it could eliminate some of the tedious or monotonous work from the staff, but I think it really just displaces it from one task to another. And why I say that is, even though that this is being automatically debited out of the accounts, our staff is going to have to manually enter all this data into the system. And speaking with the staff on the matter, they're, they're not quite sure how they would even do this yet. There's been no discussion with them with the civic system. We have two possibilities that our customers can enroll in right now. They can either get into the PSN, the payment service network that was previously done, and they also have the option to utilize the civics. At the end of this, last month, July, we actually have 152 people signed up to get electronically through the civics, with 97 of those being new customers. So, we're giving out information to those new customers about the possibility of receiving this. And out of that 152, 27 are actually enrolled for the debit as well. So, even though they're getting the electronic communication, they're not necessarily doing the debit. And I know that we're trying to, to save some money and time for the individuals, for the village, as well as for the staff, but I'm not sure that we're really going to achieve that. I would much rather see us try to do something, whether it be with our Facebook, or whether it be with our, our website, or whether it be with flyers, or any, all three of the above, try to promote people to utilize the new system. And I said, I, I find that the, the 50 cent or a dollar is, is a very minimal incentive to get someone to try to sign up for this. And I would rather see us put our time elsewhere.
How many do we have on the PSN system or whatever?
Currently, the ones that are opting out are, and which means they're not getting a paper bill. Where'd that go? We have 1,426 on PSN.
1,426.
Right. Any customer can go into PSN with their customer account number and set up an account with PSN. It doesn't cost them anything, and it will notify them when their bill is ready to be looked at. Once they set up an account with PSN, it can, holds their history from that point forward, so they could look 10 years from now. We've been utilizing PSN since 2014, but it is not a free service to the village. It's a free service to the customers, but we don't charge them for paying their bills that way. But 1,426 as of the end of July.
When you say it's not a free service to the village.
Right.
Does it cost us that?
It costs us, depending on how they pay. If they pay, you know, with a credit card, we're paying a, the 3% credit card fee, plus depending on how they initiate that, it's 55 cent per transaction for.
To, to the village.
Right. We do not charge customers that. It does automatically post to our system. We don't have to manually post those. So, if a customer goes online today, up until, I don't know, when they clear out, I think it's until tomorrow morning, if they go anytime and go in and pay their payment, we go in the next morning and pull that batch in, and it automatically posts everything to those customers' accounts. So, there's additional charges, there's a system they can use that is an automated system, that they can call and make a payment via the phone. That is an additional charge. They can also call and talk to a person and make a payment via their phone, but directly to a person. That's an even a higher charge for that. But we average, well, the service charge that they charge us, plus the credit card fees and everything, it can average between $5,000 and $6,000 a month, what we're paying.
We're paying?
Yes.
So, the idea for this, though, is through Civics, which is the company that did the software programming for us, is that currently, somebody can receive or sign up for auto payment, and there's no deduction for auto payment through Civics, correct?
They don't charge us, no.
Right. So, this isn't for PSN, this would be for Civics only, so we would get them off of PSN, and we would stop paying those charges. This is for us to send them the bill electronically, and then to receive the auto payment through Civics. We already do that with how many customers? 2,000, 3,000?
The.
Are under Civics auto pay?
Um, auto pay, 1,490 are the recurring.
Is that with PSN or Civics?
With PSN.
No, with Civics.
Civics. We only have, 27 people have signed up of the 152 that are.
No, I mean, how many people have auto pay? Because I have auto pay through Civics.
Oh, okay.
So, how many have just auto pay?
Without the electronic notification, is what you're asking?
I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay. Well, when we first set it up about 20 some odd years ago, I think we'd gotten close to 50% of the customers were set up for auto pay.
Oh, I'm sorry. 1,725 were as of June.
Okay.
Through Civics?
Through.
Well, through PSN?
Where we auto debit, the village of Morton goes in and creates a batch file and auto debits their checking or savings account for their bill.
But you still send them a paper bill?
If they choose to. They can opt out and not get a bill at all, or now they can sign up to have us email limo bill.
And that auto pay is from the bank?
Yeah, through the bank. We do an ACH transaction.
We're not paying a credit card.
Correct.
Sounds like we got a lot of different systems.
Yes, we do.
So, the idea is to incentivize people moving to Civics. We would send them the bill electronically. They can't receive a paper bill, because we would still have to pay for the envelope, the processing, and the postage. But if they sign up to receive their utility bills by way of email only, and then auto pay through Civics, we would give them a dollar a month deduction to do that. The part to remember, and, you know, the part that I understand is, is that when we have Civics process the payment, it automatically goes out, gets the money, brings it in, and automatically distributes it to the individual accounts as well. All right? So, there's no processing that an individual has to do, other than maybe to tell it to just do it. Correct?
Right. When we do create that.
Right.
I guess, I have a, I, I don't think the auto pay, I don't believe it needs an incentivization. Is that a word?
Incentivization.
Incentivization. But, and particularly of a dollar. I don't, I don't think, I think that's, you know, a dollar's a dollar, right? To get that, but it's such a negligible amount that I don't know that there's going to be many folks that are going to be like, oh, well, I gotta, I have to do it now, because I'm going to save a dollar. That aside, I would like to see, and it's kind of a separate issue, but, okay, can, is there a way that we can get people from the PSN, like, automatically, you know, just send a letter and say, hey, we're transferring you from this system to this system? Is that?
Ah, that would be an attorney question. I'm not sure he can automatically.
Right. Correct me if I'm wrong, but under PSN, they can utilize a credit card. We don't do that with Civics.
Okay.
And that was prior to Julie, when we pushed for credit cards.
You know, and.
So, that was pushed, that was probably, that was about since I've been here, so that was probably.
Yeah.
Eight, nine years ago, for some of you that were here, that was the push from some of the trustees to go to credit cards. That's why we pay the extra.
Well, I think we talked about that before, that having the credit cards makes, makes sense. And I guess if Civics doesn't do that, then there is a need for that. You probably don't have this in front of you, is do you know the breakdown of the people that, credit card on the PSN versus ACH?
No, I don't. You know, of that $5,000 to $6,000, 3,500, 3,700 is going to be your credit card payment fees. So, you're going to pay that. In this day and age, very few people want you to have access to their checking account.
I get that.
Or savings account. There's, you know, a lot of people would prefer to control it themselves and pay via credit card. So, I think you're not going to lose, no matter which direction you're going to go. Civics does not currently offer a credit card processing on their end. So, in order to stay with the times, I guess you could say, your, a service like PSN is pretty required.
Okay.
This day and age.
Why was it decided, and I'll ask the mayor, if you remember, why was it decided to have the village pay the fees, though? I don't understand that, because a lot of others don't offer that reduction in cost. Do you remember?
I do not remember, but it probably had something to do with shutting off water, and those people would have access to use credit cards. It's probably had, trying to eliminate some of that shutting off water non-payment and keeping books up to date.
And I think, you know, going with Julie's saying too, you know, that's kind of normal now. I mean, I think I pay my internet that way, I pay my, and they don't charge, you know, it's on my credit card, and they don't charge me a fee. And I don't think it's normal to be charged a fee, you know, if I'm paying for some on my credit card, normally that's picked up by the business that's, that's getting the money. Now, I don't say I like that, but that's.
I will say it was still a shock when I saw how much we budgeted for it, even after that was decided. You're like, well, so from that day forward, I always knew, when somebody asked me, you know, hey, you got to pay 3% extra to pay a credit card, I was like, I get it.
Yeah.
I mean, and we pay a lot every year.
Well, where I'm coming from with this, I'm old school, I like a paper thing to put in my file, but I pay it in about 10 seconds through the bank. Well, how you deal with that, I don't know, but I, but to pay me a dollar to change would be laughable to me. I mean, I, I don't know how you can, if this is an incentive to get our residents to change, you're going to have to give them a Snicker bar or something, paying more than a dollar.
Well, and I think, since we passed this in April, we have not had a month that we could put, I think if we were to put a flyer in with the paper bill, that that might get the attention of a lot of people who, unless they are going to our website or reading our Facebook, because we did post stuff out there, they don't know that they can get their bill emailed to them. But since we passed this, we have not had a month that we hadn't already pledged it to, say, the chamber, or the library, or the park district, or whomever, Fine Arts Council, that they have, we allow them to put a flyer in the bills. October will be the first month that we have the capability of putting a flyer in the bills saying, hey, if you don't want to get this in paper form anymore, you know, you can go to our website, sign up, and we will send it to you via email.
And I like, I like that idea of doing the flyer, because I think a lot of people don't do it just because they don't, aren't aware of it.
Yeah.
Just haven't paid attention to it, get a flyer, maybe that'll, I think that's, and to me, the incentive to do that is more of the convenience of being able to me, the incentive to do that is more of the convenience of being able to do it, to not have to run your bill up and drop in the box, and, you know, just laughing about gas prices on the way in here, you know, drive across town, well, that's, that's $5, you know, worth of gas. And I think the convenience of that is worth more than, I think, what we could, what we could fairly offer.
Right. And the only reason why I suggested the deduction from the bill is, is that I receive, it's gotta be at least 12 times a year, from one credit card company, where I still receive a paper statement mailed to me by the USPS. They say that they'll give me a one-time $5 credit if I would sign up for their, you know, service of emailing it to me. And I find that to be laughable, because after five months, they're the ones who are making out like a bandit on it, not me. And so that's the only reason why, because we would receive a constant monthly deduction in either labor or, you know, things that we might have to do for it. But it's not for PSN, because we're still gonna have to pay a fee. I'm not suggesting that at all. But if you get a utility bill sent to you by email only, we don't mail you one, because people can still ask to have one mailed to them, or, and get an email copy. But if it's email only, so we don't have any expense in sending it out, the system would take care of it, and then set up for auto pay, it would automatically take the money out of your checking account, or savings account, or whatever, you know, a type of account, money market, whatever. Then the system processes those payments automatically as well. And for that, the incentive was, is that a dollar a month. If you want to make it zero, I don't have a problem with that at all. But I do want to get people signed up, you know, for the process, the long-term savings.
And I agree with you on that, on that. I think, I think it's a great idea. I think auto pay is a great idea. I just don't think there's, we need to add complexity to the system to try to give a credit, a negligible credit back.
I agree with what you're saying, that if we can do something, and like I said before, we're either using our Facebook, our website, or the flyers, to try to do something to promote. We're already given new customers information when they come in, and not the possibility of signing up. But to go back, the dollar, I find that very minimal. And the individuals who in town, that that dollar would really mean something to, well, they're losing the 10% discount now, because they're not paying anything until they get the shut-off notification. And so that's when they're making their payments. So they're not even getting the 10% discount by paying it, you know, by the 27th, so.
That's true.
I guess my last comment is, we ought to be rethinking this PSN thing, these credit card payments.
Well, the only, I have had several different companies reach out to me and say they can do it cheaper. But after the fiasco that I've seen happen with the garbage bills, where everybody was required, and by law, you cannot just automatically take your customer base that's in PSN and move them to another company. Everybody would have to go in and set up their accounts all over again. We still have people, we changed billing dates 2018. We still have people who are still on the old billing cycle and are losing their 5% discount every month, because they've got it set to come out of their checking account or savings account on the first. You know, so I don't know that, at this current economic status we're in, that I don't know that we want to put people where they're gonna be at risk at getting disconnected, because they didn't go in and change and set up a new account with the new system and-
Maybe you ought to provide incentive for them to do that.
Yeah, you could do that.
Let me see. We could give them a dollar a month.
A little more than that.
I think you're gonna have to give them a little more.
Maybe 3% of their bill.
3%.
Which might be $12 a year.
You know, and if you talk about, you know, giving, charging for the 3%, or charging, the one area that irritates me is the people who call every month and make a payment over the phone. They'll call the village office. It goes through PSN, just like it does, but it takes additional time from our staff to sit there and key in their credit card number, or key in their checking account, and their routing number. And, but yet, they'll turn around and next month, do the same thing.
You know, so then should we change this and remove the incentive and put a charge on, a flat-rate charge, to handle any of those process calls that the village has to do?
I would rather us just not do it.
Say, I don't know with this economy. I'm afraid to-
Give any incentive, just try to promote them to utilize the system.
At this point, I'd say yes. Let's try to promote the use of the civic system. And I guess, think, think, think about how we can avoid, would you say $5,000 or?
$5,600 a month.
This current bill's $5,718.
That's crazy.
But you're saving way more than that amount of staff time. Because back in the day, they used to have to key in everybody's account number and everybody's payment. Everybody's, you know, this automatically does everything in the background. We're not keying anything in. It puts the money in the bank, and-
So even though it's $5,700, it's still saving us some money on some of the other items.
Right. What the cost, right.
I think to trustee Parrott's point, like him, most everything we pay is on auto pay. And most of it goes through the credit card, not through the bank account. And it also seems to me that the people who might appreciate the 50 cents or a dollar the most are the people who maybe can't really put their accounts on auto pay, because they don't know if they'll have the funds, and it could put them in a predicament. So the chances of getting 100% of the citizens to be on auto pay is probably not gonna happen. But over time, as people become accustomed to how nice it is to have things on auto pay, if you can do that, I think more and more will do that. So, I don't know if we'll ever get rid of the credit card situation. I do find some retailers for my business are now charging me 3% to put things on my credit card. So I am watching that. Some do, but most don't.
Do you look back to the day when you accepted a check from a customer, and how many would not be valid when it was processed? You know, most vendors look at the 3% as a pretty good trade-off from what they're not losing in NSF fees and all the fees that they're charged when somebody bounces a check. Because we get charged $25 by the bank when somebody bounces a check.
So we have a motion and a second. What would you gentlemen like to do?
The motion's on the table, so I'd recommend HP just call it, and your discussion is Ben, you're not in favor of it, you just vote it down and move on.
Okay. Call the roll.
Parrott?
No.
Mennel?
No.
Newman?
No.
Leach?
Yes.
Hilliard?
No.
Glunier?
No.
Motion fails.
All right. Any of the other trustees, or Mr. Leach, any of you have anything else?
Nope, that's it.
If not, we do not need any closed session, so if we can have a motion to adjourn.
So I'm gonna vote.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.